Good evening, good evening. Okay now, I know it's called outside, but you're standing there when you're stuck in time. But please, you can be a little louder, because "good evening".
Good evening.
Yeah, stop with everyone. At this time, I'm trying to stop, because it's an open, open show. I saw this, Mr. Long, he was technically, our last meeting, he didn't have officially closed out. So now, we have officially closed our last meeting now. And then, Mr. Long.
You said very well, this is, I mean, evening, everyone. At the last meeting on Wednesday, November 9th, during our executive session, there was a local article that went on that required the Board of Education to leave the building. And at that point, we ended the meeting and did not come back out to adjourn the executive session and then adjourn the meeting. So just for record-keeping purposes, we just need to add that technical procedural step, first, we motion for adjournment of the executive session, and then a motion to adjourn the meeting as a whole, and then we can continue with our regular meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Long. So therefore, the board members at this time, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn our executive session to our last meeting on November 9th. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Miss White, second by Miss Moore. Any questions, and then, please.
Mr. Clay?
Yes.
Ms. Reddick?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw? Ms. Hatt? Ms. Thomas?
Ms. Thomas is up.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion and carry.
And then, at this time, about the executive session meeting on Thursday, I'm... And at this time, I'd like to adjourn, officially adjourn, I would like to make a motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move by Miss Martin, second by Miss Moore. Any questions, and then, please. Here, you know, no call, please.
Mr. Clay?
Yes.
Ms. Reddick?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Depp?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion and carry.
Thank you, Miss Moore. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the Wissel Township Board of Education's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday. No, today is Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates and a notice dated August 23rd, 2022. Adequate and inadrian notice of this public people has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised at the current post, posted in all schools, the administration, the office, the municipal building, the library, the medical center, the community, downtown, and the Wissel Township post offices. And this is our chief statement. The mission of the Wissel Township School District and large diversity and growing community is to educate all members, all students, to be confident, lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and tolerant members of their community. The district, partnership with the community in the climate of cooperation and mutual respect, provide academic empowerment, which values excellence, encourages students to strive for personal excellence and assist them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. No call, please.
Mr. Clay?
Present.
Ms. Reddick?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Ms. Moore?
Present.
Ms. Depp?
Present.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Shaw is on.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
Ms. Thomas is up.
Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
And Ms. Pitts?
Present.
We have a call?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Can we now speak to the board members? That's like, you apply, I'm gonna tell you these things right there. We're here to talk about the issues we stand on, on the issue, on the behalf, individual, every team, test, score.
The 2022 to 2023 district goals. Number one, student achievement. Continue to implement best practices for delivering instruction to students utilizing all available and appropriate educational methods. This shall include A, ensuring articulation at all grade levels throughout the district. B, focus on innovative classroom instruction at all grade levels. C, ensuring all students have equal access to equipment and resources needed to facilitate and promote student learning and achievement. D, evaluation of daily all district programs, including athletic and social activities. D, accountability of all district staff. Number two, continue to foster a safe and positive school environment that is conducive to teaching and learning, by paying a focus on building relationships among staff and employees that result in increased learning and more effective instruction with one, through communication and feedback opportunities. B, emphasis on collaboration with all district stakeholders. C, promote inclusive, diverse, and compassionate learning environment. And number three, market our strengths and achievements to all stakeholders who, release capacity for greater and care for needs or by day. Continue with our public relations marketing plan. B, continue to work with the barriers you guys are creating in the district. And C, focus on defining your communication methods to better market our social media.
Thank you, Ms. Depp. Board members, I'm going to talk to the students at this time, before we enter our important presentations. I believe that is the only other member of the course, as a matter of fact, which two, two major holidays and celebrations were in the initial sequence. In most cases, whenever we think about a memory, we think certainly of Veterans Day. And the second one is Thanksgiving. And actually, because of Veterans Day, we're able to be here and give thanks. I think it was important for us to celebrate, recognize several of our students who wrote essays to the township in the later, with regards to what Veterans Day means to them. And I was there, so was Ms. Peterson. And so, we were impressed by the thoughtfulness, the encyclopedias of these, of our students, our students at Wissel Township. So, therefore, this evening, the board has asked these students to come forward. If we just have a small appreciation to give them. There's nine of them. Three from the seventh grade, three from the eighth grade, and three from the twelfth grade. I'm going to ask the, the first prize winner of each section to come on and read their essays for you. But at this time, I'm going to ask, and I'm going to call out the names of all winners. Ms. Peterson will give you our small, so good appreciation. That's okay with you? It's okay with you? Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask, um, seventh grade, Ashley Elizabeth Proctor. She was in first place. Second place in the seventh grade, Basil Aiden Aden. Third place in the seventh grade, Gianna Patutu. And now, we move to our eighth graders. First place, Fatima Nazir Iqbal. Second place winner in the eighth grade is Anaya Wright. Third place winner in the eighth grade is Hillary Amankua. And for our twelfth graders, our first place winner was Stephanie Akambi. The second place winner was Anthony in testimony. Mrs. Bella, I think it's like this. Twelfth grade, and Victor Alami. So at this time, I'm going to ask, um, the first place winner of the seventh grade in this contest, Ashley Elizabeth Proctor. She will step up and read her essay for us.
Have you ever realized how we, how we as a society go on evidence of how much we're veterans do? A veteran served our country with great rigor to protect us. Whether a veteran has served in the army, the Marine Corps, or initially in the military, they have also served the length of arms and deadlines to a just bigger country as they were placed. I plan to always respect veterans, even in the face of difficult, transform behaviors, and show them as much as I can to make themselves and others as knowledgeable as they possibly can to be never dissimilar to yours. We're respecting veterans, even in the face of difficult, transformative work. I know that people don't appreciate what veterans do, like fighting TV and independent, and so on and so forth. The work of giving to society for people to advocate, and make it to a better end. I see that people are very cold, warm, and they put their top down, parents, parents, grandparents, and elders. So respecting veterans is extremely important thing to do when they're being taught by other, dedicated people. Talking about veterans is just as important as describing them. Being uneducated makes you more vulnerable to suggestion. When you think about it, when you've been a long time veteran, you'll be there some more people, maybe you're making a problem. Being informed and kept up with veterans' actions gets you to understand how important veterans are to our society. You're led to gain your voice service in the world, and you're a delight to them. Giving them means resolve conflicts that will lead to or lead to the future of youth and young. A way to keep yourself educated and respecting veterans is remembering their service. On days like Veterans Day, we often remember the war wars and celebrate them. But our veterans do the chase that celebrates the revolution and war. So maybe try to keep them remembered, even looking for landmarks where this country is important. But I look back on my life, just that I have learned to respect their service and keep myself educated all the way to keep this country safe. I've always been one who did this. I promise to always remember that's meaning, to people who worry about it, and that may be possible.
And our eighth grade first place winner is Fatima Nazir Iqbal.
According to Martin Jorskopf, he takes the figure of one of his friends and goes into battle. On June 1st, 1924, Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the legislation for veterans to become an official federal power. Veterans are established for a day of cause and of sacrifice and never made the unemployment change. Veterans are meant to be those who have gone out to the battle, and know that they have the danger of their own lives to be able to defend the country, that they put their heart and soul towards. The accomplishments they have done, eyes of American citizens continue to congratulate with the boldness and ambition of those veterans who have served this nation. Veterans, as we know today, have a special place in many people's hearts for if they have served the war a long period of time, through military, air, or naval services. Although, the components of Americans may go by their bright days, without its political outcome or hardship and sacrifices, these value and meaning that men have done for our safety. Being the reason for why Veterans Day is a federal holiday is how this purpose is to spread knowledge and stories about experiences that serve to the worst of the encounter. Veterans Day is known to take place on a memory monument every year with parades and to letters and donations to assist these veterans who are in need. There are current sole traditions of dress ceremony, with precedent laid to write on the timely unknown soldier at arms within the territory. To represent official the observance of Veterans Day. At the memorial gestures families across the United States shows a commercial recognition of both service members that connected on the side of this region during the time period of November 11th AM. Even though our members continue calling them through strangers around us, found by our right wing, how individuals are far from this nation. For you to wake up and find a beautiful, healthy country relying on us to possess and explain it.
As a senior official, we strive for personal excellence for our students. Uh, twelfth grade essay winner, Debbie Akambi.
There are two types of people in this world, those who seek respect and never earn it, and those who crave respect and never seek it. Those who are respected are regarded with great value. They've contributed much to the world, they've achieved significant accomplishments, they've overcome the seemingly impossible. They do it all for the sake of others and for the sake of their country, rather than for their own sake. There are people of integrity, who stick by their word and stay true to themselves, no matter what those around them think. They do what is right because it is right, and they respect not only themselves, but others around them. To have respect is to have honor, and to have honor is to be a veteran. Numerous people in this world, they're, they're in for some sort of respect. They chase it down to the ends of the earth, hoping that someday it will be theirs. They chase, they don't wait. They have no patience, no integrity, and they are selfless. They want what is best for themselves, not for others. They do things not for the sake of others, but for their country, but for their own sake. They seek their own glory if they are filled with greed and insolence. Their hunger for glory, for honoring glory, leaves them empty-handed, for they know not what it means to be honored. To them, honor is power and fame, when it is truly admiration and respect. Their eagerness and desperate dreams end up to be all in vain. When someone's a veteran, they are, their respect is earned. They have sacrificed and risked their own life to save the life of others. Every day they serve, there's a chance of death, however, it is worth it to them. They know that they are fighting for a great cause, for the common good. A veteran serves their country with a purpose, with the purpose of liberating countless lives, with the purpose of freedom. They do not do it solely for power and fame, but because it is right. As they continue on with their service, they become recognized more and more every day. They are noticed and appreciated for their hard work and loyalty to the country. Whether or not they return home, they are always esteemed with great respect. They have fought and served for others, and have earned honor for themselves. Unlike the people who served hard for respect and never received it, veterans earn it without seeking it. To be respected is to be esteemed with great value. There are those who have selflessly contributed much to the world and have accomplished great things. All they do is for the sake of others and their country, rather than for themselves. They, um, they honor others and their own word, regardless of what others may say. They are respectful of themselves and of others, and they contribute to what is right to the world. These are the type of people that receive honor, and they are veterans.
So ladies and gentlemen, here from the fathers, at this point, I'm going to ask the parents, the source of these wonderful children, just stand up, and, and look at your relatives, of us. The parents of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pitts and Mrs. Peterson. We just want to, uh, stand in stead of our mayor and, uh, co-counseling fast ways who had originally planned to be here because on November 11th, the eighth grade students received their awards at the ceremony, but our seventh grade students did not, and they have sent them via us to give to you this evening. So I'll just call your name, and please come up to Mr. White and receive your gift at this time. We'll start with our third place, seventh grade winner, Ms. Patutu. Is that them? And Ms. Martin. Congratulations.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, of course, I'm, I'm a guest, the students. Uh, tonight, I want to make a presentation on, uh, the dynamic learning bags in excess for English language learners. In September, ladies and gentlemen, I made a presentation with New Jersey School of Learning and Assessment. However, there were some students who were exempting from taking that state assessment. Uh, there were small, uh, number of young people, they are our special education students and our English language learners. Uh, these students, um, were exempted for various reasons, and that's beginning to be critiqued. I will explain to you why these individuals did not necessarily have to take the standardized tests. However, the state does require that all students take the standardized test. Uh, board members, you should have a copy of this presentation in the focus, alright? Follow along with this. The dynamic learning bags test, this is 2021, 2022, even a year before. The dynamic learning bags is an outline alternate online study. The dynamic learning bags is an online alternative assessment. For students with significant intellectual disabilities. Students are tested in grades three through eight and eleven in English, mathematics, and mathematics. Students in grades five, eight, and eleven are also tested in science. So those tested programs are English mathematics, mathematics, and science. Again, ladies and gentlemen, these are our young people who are, um, significantly in tel- intellectual disabilities, these are our young people who need special attention, cannot necessarily sit for standardized state tests, uh, but they still are measured based on their, uh, their program. Uh, we're going to start with grades three and four, third and fourth, English mathematics. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to give a reading chart across from left to right, alright? Start with third grade, English mathematics. There are only fourteen students that were tested. Now, there are four categories in which you measure their growth. Emerging, approaching the target, at the target, which is set by the state, and advanced, meaning they moved beyond their target. So, we have fourteen students that were tested in third grade in English mathematics and mathematics. Four of those students in English mathematics is in the category of emerging. Now, emerging, of course, is that the lowest level, the beginning level. Approaching, there were five students. There were also five students who met their targets according to the state. There were no students who were advanced, and other fourteen students, thirty-six percent were at target or advanced. Now, mathematics, again, jump up the same fourteen students. Ten are emerging, two approaching the target, two met the target, none of them were advanced, for fourteen percent. Fourth grade, English mathematics and mathematics, we had ten students who were tested. Two of them were emerging, four approaching their target, four were at target, none were advanced. In mathematics, same ten students, two were emerging, none were approaching target, seven of them were at the target, one was advanced, for eighty percent of the ten students testing. And then, again, ladies and gentlemen, you will see that the numbers are very strong. These numbers, of course, were not included in our, um, student learning assessment, of course. Uh, so at this point, uh, in most cases, we'll be using, we did not necessarily have to pull out on this one. report out on these small numbers, but at this stage, it required me to find studies that you report out on all of these. Uh, fifth grade, English language charts, we had thirteen students tested, as well as mathematics and science. Six were emerging, two approaching the target, four were at target, one advanced. Mathematics, six are emerging, four approaching the target, two were at the target, one advanced. In the area of science, ten were emerging, three approaching the target, none of them were at target, and none were advanced. Sixth grade, English language charts, there were only eight students tested in English language charts and mathematics. Two of them were emerging, five approaching the target, one was at target, none were advanced. In mathematics, six emerging, one approaching the target, one was at target, for thirteen percent, at target or advanced. Seventh and eighth grade. In seventh grade, we had a total of ten students who were tested. In English language charts, a student was emerging, one, four was approaching the target, five were at target, none were advanced. In mathematics, six were emerging, one approaching the target, one was at target, two advanced, so three of the ten, uh, were at target or advanced, for thirty percent. Eighth grade, English language charts, mathematics and science, we were only five students tested. One were emerging, three approached the target, one was at target, none were advanced. In mathematics, eighth grade, five students, one emerging, one approaching, zero at target, but three advanced. In science, two emerging, one approaching target, none at target, but two advanced, forty percent of the five students. That concludes the area of English language charts. Science and mathematics for seventh and eighth grade. Grade eleven, there were only seven students in grade eleven who were tested in English language charts, mathematics, and science. Uh, of the seven students, two in the English language charts were emerging, five approaching the target, none were at target, none were advanced. The seven students in mathematics, one is emerging, one approaching, five were at target, none were advanced. In the area of science, five were emerging, two approaching the target, none were at target, none were advanced. Now, we're moving on to our English language learners. We're talking about young people who've come to us, who speak no English at all. You will also see that those numbers are very small also. Just for clarification, the access for ELL is an English proficiency assessment used to measure the English proficiency of nine English speaking students from grades K to twelve. Proficiency is measured in three major domains. Oral language, fifty percent listening, fifty percent speaking. Literacy, fifty percent reading, fifty percent is writing. In the area of comprehension, seventy percent of that assessment is reading and thirty percent is listening. The assessment title for the kindergarten, paper and pencil, and that's how they tested the youth in paper and pencil. Grades one, two, second, first, second, and third, part of their test is online and part of their test is on paper. In grades fourth through twelfth grade, the entire assessment is online. For this assessment, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like for you to read down in each of the domains, for example, uh, first we have the proficiency level. The proficiency level starts with entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching, and those are the progressions in which young people are measured. So oral language, so we're going to go down, thirty-three percent, now, first of all, we point out that there were only eighteen students, alright? So we're going to go down, and again, these are young people who came to us who did not speak any English at all. So as we move down, thirty-three percent are entering, thirty-three percent are emerging, twenty-two percent were developing, there were none in the expanding category, six percent were in the bridging, and six percent were in, uh, the reaching. We move to the next domain, which is literacy. Eighty-nine percent were entering, six percent were emerging, six percent were developing, there were none in the expanding, bridging, and reaching category. The, the, the next dom- uh, domain, excuse me, is comprehension. In comprehension, eighty-three percent were entering, eleven percent emerging, six percent developing, there were no students in the expanding, bridging, and reaching category. So your overall totals are presented, seventy-eight percent were in the entering category, seventy percent emerging, six percent developing, and zero percent in the expanding, bridging, and reaching, based on the percentages of those who were being tested in that category. Grades one, again, the proficiency levels, of course, are the same. Uh, the domains, oral language, literacy, comprehension, overall total score. Twenty-nine percent were entering, and we're going down in oral language. Twenty-nine percent were entering, thirty-three percent emerging, twenty-four percent developing, ten percent expanding, five percent bridging, zero percent is reaching. Again, we're looking at only twenty-one students, uh, in the first grade who are being tested. Literacy, fifty-seven percent entering, thirty-three percent emerging, ten percent developing, there were no students in the expanding, bridging, or reaching proficiency levels. Comprehension, twenty-nine percent entering, fourteen percent emerging, thirty-eight percent developing, five percent expanding, ten percent bridging, five percent reaching. The overall total score percentile, forty-eight percent were entering, thirty-eight percent emerging, ten percent developing, five percent expanding, zero percent bridging and reaching. I'll do a couple more of these, uh, board members and members of the community. It's pretty much self-explanatory process, it pretty much follows the same, uh, procedure. Uh, the proficiency levels are the same, they are every grade level, entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. In the seventh grade, there were only fifteen students tested. And again, for oral language, uh, twenty percent entering, thirteen percent emerging, twenty-seven percent developing, thirty-three percent expanding, seven percent bridging, and zero percent reaching. The literacy category, seven, twenty-seven, sixty-seven, zero, bridging and reaching. Comprehension, thirteen percent entering, thirteen percent emerging, forty percent developing, seven percent expanding, twenty percent bridging, seven percent reaching. Overall score percentile, twenty percent emerging, seven percent, excuse me, entering, seven percent emerging, sixty-seven percent developing, seven percent expanding, zero percentile, bridging and reaching. What I'll do is just go through the other charts, uh, board members. There were twenty-two students tested in grade three. Again, uh, the proficiency levels were the same, oral language domain, literacy, comprehension, and you have the overall totals. What I'll do is just go through each chart, so you can see the number of students. In grade four, we only had fifteen students tested in grade four. Thirteen students in grade five. We only had nine students in grade six. There were no students in seventh grade, so we go to number ten, grade eight. In eighth grade, there were only seven students. Ninth grade, we had fourteen students. Tenth grade, there were only four. And then, afraid there was only one student, right? Twelfth grade, we had two students. Again, uh, proficiency levels, entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. The domains, of course, were the same, we have the oral language, literacy, comprehension, and the total testing. Uh, since it's only two, so you have fifty percent category, percentile, uh, in each category, of course, add the debit sheet, become, uh, absolute. Members of the board, have any questions on these assessments? Anyone, anyone have any questions or? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Board members, at this time, I'm going to send one page to, uh, will it be, will it correspond to this?
No, that president can't correspond to this.
Thank you. Moving now, board members, I'm asking for a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting of the seventh, Wednesday, November ninth, our regular meeting open session. Any other questions?
Questions are covered by the board members before the application, regular meeting starts in November ninth, on twenty-two, following session.
Then, move on, Ms. Martin, second on, Ms. Moore, any questions or comments? Here you go, please.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Ms. Strang.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. May.
I see.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Can you see the motion has carried?
Thank you, thank you. Moving now, board members, for the meeting, for it, for the members of the community, for our, uh, athletic community, uh, the, uh, show, it's not a business. And, yeah, we, for our, uh, operations committee.
Madam President, we had a meeting today, Friday night, but the, uh, kids are pretty bright on December fourteenth, and I'd like to support you.
Thank you. Will you be a report out on our education committee?
Yes, Madam President. Meeting was called to order on Tuesday, November fourteenth, at four P M. We have the districts of Webex, the education committee to discuss the following topics. I'm sorry, in attendance were U. Martin, Kelly Thomas, Julie Peterson, Ministry of Members, Dr. Quagmire. Discussion topics was family engagement, student success. The education committee discussed various existing national and regional school programs for community partnerships designed to successfully increase the engagement balance in the public schools in the spirit. Recent research shows that the students in schools who successfully engage families under their students earn higher grades, score higher on tests, develop better social skills, and are more likely to graduate. One, stop solutions from Plumdale, New Jersey. Um, two, the Family School Relationship Survey, which was developed at the Department of Education to provide schools with a clear picture of them in attitudes without separate topics. The Family School Relationship Survey may be downloaded or we could schedule with them. Suggested community partnerships, the education committee indicated potential community partnerships that may increase family engagement with our district, which is shared in commitment to strengthen the founding engagement. Portraits founding success center, lights on after school, the DOD organization, and Girls Like You, after school tutoring, enrollment numbers, marketing, and, uh, SWI analysis, striking weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Future topics, identification of five factors that could be utilized to improve test scores, American Educational Week, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Next meeting is scheduled at four P M. Tuesday, December twentieth, via districts of Webex, meeting adjourned at five.
My name is Martin, I'm just a person who wants to report. Will you have four minutes, uh, on this, if you have a report out of, out of this one?
Yes, there is a report, uh, report, we, uh, discussed report, um, listen. Report, hello, report. Hi, Yokes, I said, to, my name is.
I believe that there are.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, but there is a, so yes, we, we did, on, uh, Tuesday, November second. I have four, four, champion, ten, myself, Mr. Mondays, Ms. Moore, and Ms. Pitts, Mr. Dean, Mr. Michael, uh, the discussion was recognizing the power of E S P. For the month of November, and this, this, where education support personnel, and, um, came up with a few different ideas. One of the ideas that we decided to do was take pictures of all the E S P, that must drivers, secretaries, assistant assistants, cafeteria workers, and student staff. And we wanted to recognize the, the district's social community. Uh, it was put up about six days ago. Uh, I, I liked it, uh, so if you're gonna check it out, it's supposed to be Whizno Township School, baseball age, I'm not very good at it, but we did recognize, uh, like I said, group service staff, technology, nervous staff, and our professional security, child security team, and student staff, and we have pictures, about at least ten and twelve pictures, of our E S P. And have E S P, and all the E S P people that are in our discussion, thank you so much for all the things that you do. That is my work.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Can you say that on class, two more things, prayer, prayer, help?
Yes.
This is big, this is for going together with Saturday's presentation.
Thank you so much.
That's good to hear, thank you, Mr. Moore. Moving now, with regards to, I put out the policy committee, it's not, there is going to be put out the policy committee, and there will be, of course, we do not have, we see anything to come down to, towards, with regards to, as we do, with regards to our policies, so there will be no policy committee, be, what to separate, uh, for, for, to, in, uh, the coming year, gentlemen. Could there be, whatever, citizens advisory?
Yes, Madam President. The Citizen Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, November fifteenth, at seven P M. at the District's Administration Building. Today, members present were Christie Mansoli, Marson Tom Sella, absent were Colonel Carver, Tish, Tommerys, Joe Thomas, Oliver Ortiz, Ruth, Rosie Poplin, Jennifer Bar, Michelle Kane, and Cindy, Cindy Skerner. And I was not present, so. All business, a review of items discussed on the last few months was held. It was decided to list outstanding questions that were still pending and sent down directly to Rita Martin, Mrs. Pitts, and Dr. routine for updates on their status, or are they still leaving possible. Christie will prepare less than two days. A short discussion upon a district clothing swap was held. We need someone to do paperwork, looking at the paperwork, and orange stating, as well as a location. Christie and Marson suggested perform a subcommittee, which one? Christie and Marcy suggested, in form of some committee, which one, Ruth, to develop a recommendation to the board for recruiting assist initiatives she brought up to improve one of the last meetings. Marcy and Christie also suggested that we discuss part of our recommendation to the board to develop a plan to enhance our website that would, quote, upcoming events by our students and business. We would like to thank Dr. Reteau and Mrs. Pitts for the presentation to the public on safety protocols, as treated, about on, meeting adjourned at eight o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions, ladies? As regards to the citizen advisory committee, just like we gave the time to, to remind board members that, uh, the current members of the board, the unit is coming to an end, and they have asked them to actually go put to a document, and I believe that, um, it also, to acknowledge the public, the application for any new members who would like to join the citizen advisory committee. I believe, Dr. Reteau, you have, the, uh, the application, and so I believe that, uh, that you did not think for anyone who wants to join the C I C is, um, you complete the application, and you have it towards by January, December, twenty twenty-three. And with regards to the citizen advisory committee, I believe, certainly, they do meet the first Thursday in every month now, or December, the first Thursday is December first. But I would like to ask and suggest that that be, only because we received an invitation from the board to attend the, uh, the National Honor Society and National Ceremony, which will be held on Thursday, December first, at six thirty. So I raise that, uh, you take steps to, um, move your citizen advisory committee meeting to a date other than December first, so that the meeting board members who may attend that would have the, and also, the, uh, members that large, have the opportunity to attend.
I'm looking at December eighth, December eighth.
Okay, is that what the action is saying? Put that in our meeting. December meeting for the citizen advisory committee is December eighth at seven. May I make the question? May Thursday, December eighth, at seven P M. And before we move on to go further, I do believe that, which is not, uh, she's represented, she can't, she's sitting up right here. Uh, I believe she has some analysis that she wants to share.
Thank you. Uh, hello, I am the chief of justice, the representative. Uh, I would just like to say that we, um, just concluded our Thanksgiving food drive today. Uh, we got such good results, there was so many candidates, well, and, um, we're ready to provide more, other families, um, it was such a great outcome. So now we have our annual community, um, it is hosted by the whole school student government, which I'm kind of, I'm the president there. Um, the annual community is hosted over, run by, uh, two writers, Miss Clark and Miss Alexander. Their emails are Clark J E at Wisno dash schools dot com. Clark J E at Wisno dash schools dot com. So the giving tree, guys, the little is, it all, again, like, really, really, I comes right back to community, it's for less fortunate families, and for teenagers that, you know, they don't have a money to put this on the tree, I'm very fortunate to have this, and anybody who has, I'll, 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 we help every year. Um, so the giving tree, right, you know, it, um, it's on a little stick there, and it has, it's all not, it has an age, um, and gender, the size, including, um, sizes, and things that, when we're girls interested in, so that we are going to purchase a fifteen year old, two twenty-five maximum gift, and then if you don't purchase a gift, we would give it to your dollars, we continue to give your dollars, to this part, because Alexander, they go out and use the gift. Um, so if you're great, if you guys can donate or help out anyway, um, if you can make a, for any contributions, um, that includes any.
I, uh, thank you very much. Moving now, for members, I'm still page two, but this time I'm asking for a motion to approve, if you're ready to do it, if we get to page two, it moves over to the bottom of page five, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the student superintendent's report against the bottom of page two and end on the bottom of page five.
Second, move by Ms. Martin, second round, Ms. Moore. Anything comments or questions? Here we go, no call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Miss Reddick?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Moving now, what members, I'm asking, I'm at the top of page six, I'm asking for a motion to approve the business administrator, what secretary is reporting, against the top of page six, continuing through to the middle of page ten, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the business administrator board secretary's report, begins at the bottom of page ten.
Second, move by Ms. Martin, second round, Ms. Moore. Any other comments or questions? Here we go, no call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Miss Reddick?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Moving now, asking for motion to approve the personality report, as it appears, the bottom of page ten, and continuing until the bottom of page twelve, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the personality report, begins at the bottom of page ten and ends at the bottom of page twelve.
Second, move by Ms. Martin, second round, Ms. Moore. Any other comments or questions? Here we go, no call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Miss Reddick?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
And Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Moving now, what members, to our agenda. And, uh, for, 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 this time, I'm asking for, approve the business administrator, what secretary is reporting, as it appears, one hour agenda, uh, beginning with page one, and continuing through to the bottom of page three, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the business and industry garden board secretary's report, as it appears on the denim, page one through page.
Second, move by Ms. Martin, second round, Ms. Moore. Any questions or comments? Here we go, no call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Miss Reddick?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I ask, at this point, uh, we sent out the executive session minutes, the meeting?
Right.
Um, and it, it was not included in the original, uh, minutes.
Correct.
So is it possible for the board to take minutes, they have had the opportunity to read them, so that we could get them?
I'm always, it's really important, should be done now, if you want to, to take this over tomorrow, next weekend, December, it's, I need to, for the rest. So if I take a few minutes, okay, okay, before that, after you've been spending hours, for the. What members, at this time, I'm asking now for a motion to approve the minutes of our executive session, of our meeting at the cell, on Wednesday, November nine, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the executive session minutes, for my board members to occur on Wednesday, November nine, twenty twenty-two.
Second, move by Ms. Martin, second round, Ms. Moore. Any questions or comments? Here we go, no call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Miss Reddick?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Moving now, what members, at the top of page thirteen, we're having a public, and, of course, this board.
Yes, Ms. Pitts, uh, between the date, November fourth and November seventeen, responded to, uh, one open request from New Jersey Open Book dot com. They requested an electronic copy of all payment transactions for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, the revenue generated, and.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Moving now, what members, the opening, the beginning, opening, is that you can discuss at this time? Thank you. Moving now, the business, what members, what you need to do, is that you can discuss at this time? Here we go, move now, information, I'm starting to. Yes, Madam President, I have a few information I have received. Uh, I want to go back and, it's probably, uh, to, uh, last board meeting, uh, I grew up, it's physical, but we're not able to conclude that meeting, as a result of the purpose. At first, we thought that, because we start something burning, we're living, and it was something burning or fire within the devil, or goes by, um, through further investigations, I, that was not the case. But we did understand that the H B A system that we had, does work with great, uh, clean air, engine building, if a school or something is out there nearby, it's going to come to the building, but that's not the trigger, uh, the false alarm. Uh, the day before, I worked, it was November the eighth, uh, we had our annual sprinkler inspection. When we have our sprinkler inspection, uh, that entails us shutting off, um, certain valves within the school, um, so that we can write that in this test. Um, we set off, uh, we cut off certain sections to test the pressure. Once the system was turned back on, we created air pockets, and excess water pressure running through the pipes, set off, and then, water should not be running through pipes unless there's a fire, so that there's breakers to work, the sense we had that situation occurred, and as a result, of us testing the meeting for, that's the trigger, the false alarm. You're right? Uh, the last week, we did, uh, board office live student test, where we had, uh, various individuals throughout the school district, and some communities, uh, input, and I just want you to, uh, know that these are some of the things that we were able to identify as pros and cons. Um, first of all, the board office conference room is equipped with soundproofing, uh, it was excellent. I really didn't notice how much noise in this room to leave, like, we've been in this room so long, it was so tuned out, uh, once you leave, you go to the conference room, you realize how quiet it was, then you come back and hear, we all, shoot, you're right. The ring is so quiet, you need to have a few glass speakers at home. The microphone, as one of the character, uh, was more than efficient, as a matter of fact, any competition that was going on in that room could hear. Those individuals who were called in, shared with us that the sound was excellent, uh, the, the, uh, the video was excellent, uh, so we felt that that was one of the, and then the, had the, the board office as an option. We also, um, realized that, uh, we do have the ability to lie, to bring people from that particular location. We also have the ability, because of the equipment, to show, uh, presentations. Uh, we also, uh, were able to allow people to call back directly into the meeting, uh, if we, you know, like, set up a phone, right there on the desk, interact, uh, with these individuals, with board members, so those are the pros that, in the room, in itself, is an excellent, um, uh, option. And one of the things I want to just emphasize, that they go back, kind of thing to be here, here, there's no feedback, was, it's, however, the disadvantage was that, um, there's an maximum capacity of only seven. We, uh, we can come to the conference room, that, of course, we, we had turned out such a fist, that that room was personal, that would not be a problem, however, when you decided to add presentation departments, numbers, and people, then it would not be able to accommodate, uh, more than seven students in the room. Um, there is no sound system configured in that, uh, board conference room to enhance the voice of those who are being speaking, you know, we never really purchased a sound system for that room. At this point, it really doesn't need one, uh, but we are, like, really, some consideration, like, why does microphone turn hands, the voice of those who are speaking, or some type of voice protection device, possibly, ceiling, maybe two, but, or there, one another, two hands, so even if you're speaking. Uh, but for the most part, those are the advantages and disadvantages of knowledge. I made a question, Mr. Martin. All right, I'll move on, uh, ladies and gentlemen, board members, you should find in the folders, uh, the building capacity, by building, uh, you know, there's been some discussion, uh, either you or me, in, around the community, about whether or not schools are at capacity to turn, uh, student program. I provided that information for this evening, and, uh, based on the school vocation, we can still nominate an additional thousand students in the district, depending on vocation and grade, all right?
That's what you have a question?
Yes.
So this guy is rolling, he has capacity, is that a reason?
Yes, if we have more students on some buildings than capacity, why? I'm rather, but we're not, we're not in any violations or anything, such that what we did was, uh, we went through each building by square footage, we, uh, conversed, courted with the fire department, uh, so it's much more effective, we, we, but I want to make sure we have accurate numbers, because some, when it may become, uh, conversation within the community, for one reason or another, and you may be out there, so I want to make sure we had something, and then you may be able to address, whatever issue, all right? Last of the things, uh, ladies and gentlemen, you'll find on our website, uh, we had four students that have been accepted into twenty twenty-three South Jersey Senior High School course. Uh, of course, we'd like to congratulate Mr. Manning, because he consistently prepared young people for that competition. I would like to, uh, announce those individuals who were selected. Uh, Kazaya Awam, grade twelve, Kiana Kabala, grade eleven, Cassie Fresiano, grade twelve, and Shala Garnet, grade ten. Those individuals who were participating in a one hundred eighty-fourth ensemble, featuring the final singers in grades ten to twelve around the region, and of course, they will be, uh, performing in February, and we will make sure that information is ready, built, to board members, Tuesday, August, October, October, so we all have that information, that opportunity, for those who are interested in attending. Again, on behalf of the administration, I would like to congratulate Mr. Manning, those young people, uh, for a job well done, and of course, we are Wisno pride, uh, Mr. Blake, and those young people representing the highest of the Christian and Christian community. That, that includes my information, I was. Thank you, now.
And Miss Pitt?
Yes.
I just wanted to congratulate.
Excuse me, Mr. Martin, do you?
I wanted to congratulate students, staff, and everyone's job, and be, like, and I just want to, the one thing that was awesome, it was a great job, and, um, I just wanted to congratulate you.
All considered, thank you. Moving now, for members, to our public comment portion of Whistler Township Board of Education, our values, the input of citizens, and making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We also believe in the rights of citizens to observe outward news, ensure that all citizens have the opportunity to attend important meetings, and often, and to ensure that the board can conduct important business and competition, the S S speakers follow. These are not to make a public comment, for president, board board secretary, or organize those individuals, anybody who too wish to make comment. Please respect this following procedure, one, all members of the board of executives for board meetings, exchange each other in order with the express, absolute kindness, sacred, full length, and trust of prayer, for considering your comments in four minutes. Number four, please submit your questions that may not be answered this evening to the board of education, as you name, the dress is comfortable, members, where you can be contacted, the questions will be answered within a reasonable amount of time. Five, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make hurtful attacks on any district, board, E, board member, other cases, or member of the, at this time, board member. I'm asking for a motion to overturn or not meaning to publicly comment.
Motion to publicly comment. Second.
Move by Miss Martin, second by Mr. Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Thank you. You would?
The President, no one has signed up, we see people to speak, look up the check, um.
I just think they were, they were. My answer. So therefore, for members, at this time, I'm asking for motion to adjourn the public comment portion of our meeting.
Motion to adjourn the public comments. Second.
Move by Miss Martin, second by Mr. Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? For members, as it was called, second discussion.
There is not a need for executive session this evening, perhaps since when the Marcy team attended the meeting, we didn't do it, my brother. That, that was a response to something that was sent to Mrs. Pitt, God, I, I, my heart was, it was spoiled, well, it was called J B T. To that comment, and, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, still. Therefore, board members, um, before I turn out, I just wish everyone, I want to wish you a very wonderful, happy, and thankful Thanksgiving, and, um, enjoy the weekend. This is what you celebrate too, that, that's, 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 that's. At this time, I'm asking for motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
Move by Miss Martin, second by Mr. Moore, to adjourn our meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.